Then we'll go on to council information only items. Emergency housing legislation, Oasis Central Minnesota. Rose, you're on.
So do you want my address as well and everything? Or do you need that?
You can just tell them who you are and who you represent.
Okay, I'm Rose Serman with Oasis Central Minnesota. For those of you that don't know, we're a nonprofit here in Morrison County. We do food and housing support. And so this legislative session, we are asking the state for some financial support. So I came here to inform you on that as well as just kind of give you information about sort of Oasis. So maybe I'll just start there. Last year, we had more than 150 requests for emergency housing in Morrison County. And how we accommodate those, oh, there's my nice handout. How we accommodate those folks is through a motel setting. We are able to temporarily sometimes put people up there. Of those 150, we were able to accommodate less than half. Most common reasons were lack of funding. Our funding comes from grants, individual donations, fundraising events. So if we don't have the funds, we can't place people. This summer, we had a lot of full hotels with our railway and I think it was actually pipeline workers that were there. So when that occurs, there isn't, if there's no space, we don't have a place to put people. And then I just included oftentimes the individuals we serve don't have a photo ID. And that's required by the hotels that they have that to be able to check in. And something as small as an ID that seems easy to most of us, if you don't have an address to put on there, or even sometimes the fee, that can be a large barrier. You know, this housing issue is across the state. Last year, we had requests from 13 other counties to place people, and that's not included in our 150 that I counted. 13 other counties, mostly human service providers in those counties would be calling, asking us to place people. I think the furthest away county was Pipestone County. It had social services in Pipestone call and ask if we had room for someone. So what we're looking to do is sort of expand our operations and be able to more efficiently house individuals, both families and individuals. We've looked at some sites that we would like to acquire. To do that, we're looking to increase both our operations and then we would need some capital for that. So as part of that endeavor, we've gone to the state of Minnesota. We have a standalone bill, Senate File 2617, and it's the House Companion 2357. It's Senator Gazzelka and Representative Creashaw that have authored those. And that would provide a direct allocation to us. So we don't, at this point, we had a hearing, but there's been some sort of rescheduling with the coronavirus situation there. So we hope to have a hearing on that soon. There's also some other legislation for both capital and operating expenses for emergency shelter. Senate File 3599, House File 3358, is a combination of bonding, housing infrastructure bonds and cash that would go to shelters across Minnesota or organizations across Minnesota to provide capital for shelter. This legislation was actually proposed by a group of mayors, I believe it's Duluth, Minneapolis-St. Paul, and Rochester, that have identified that housing insecurity and homelessness is an issue in their communities and asked the state to come in and help with them, help support their efforts. And this is important because, I'm just reading my sheet, there's not, at a state level, there's no mechanism for obtaining capital for shelters. So this would open the door to that and also allocate some funds. I think it's important to note that both of these bills have both, they have bipartisan support. So hopefully, that's a strong case for supporting them. The current total funds are 50 million that they are asking to be allocated across the state. So with that, our hope here today was again to update you, but then to ask, I think I provided just a sample letter, to ask for your official sort of support of this legislation as it could potentially be, it would help us operate here. So I don't know if that covers, if anybody has any questions? Did I cover it? Okay.
Any questions?
How is Oasis normally funded? I mean, just for your general operating.
Yep. So we have some fundraising events, individual donations, and grants. This past year, we received a large grant from Sourcewell, and that allowed us to bring on a full-time social worker that is able to help. So we're now able to provide the shelter, but then that's such a key component is having that person there that can get people to be able to transition, connect to resources to provide more stability. So that's how we're funded at this point, is donations, grants, and fundraising events.
There was supposed to be a meeting yesterday at First United, and I was called off because of, was that something driving force from Oasis, trying to get that going?
Yep, that's a group. It's called Faith Not Fear. And actually Kathy's the chairperson of that group. And that's a group of citizens, primarily from the faith community, that have come together and said, "We recognize this as an issue in our community. We want to create awareness to try and alleviate homelessness." So they are, it's really a collaborative effort of folks that have come together to generate awareness and support our efforts. It, I guess, like a non-financial way. They don't have like a fund. They're just sort of a group of folks.
I see you have some deals with infrastructure too. Are you, is there something within the city that you're looking at for that?
Sure, yep. Right now, it's a matter of, you know, seeing if we can get the capital to purchase it and then have the operating funds. But I think our big dream, what we've looked at is St. Camilla's Place over near St. Otto's as a possible site, which would be ideal. It's got the two wings, it's out of a residential area, yet still in town for people. So I think that would be, if we were to get everything we asked for, that would be sort of the dream.
Is that currently owned by the sisters there?
The hospital owns it.
The hospital?
Yep, and the hospital's been a great partner for us. So if we, you know, are able to secure the capital and operating, they're willing to work with us to sell it.
Mr. President. Rose, as far as the need throughout all the other counties is, how would we make sure we're taking care of locals first? And I'm sure you have discussed this problem. And you're going to hear a lot about veterans, homeless veterans and things like that. Do you have any, and maybe I got the cart before the horse.
Yeah, so we would hope, you know, the first that Senate File 2617, 2357, that would come directly to Oasis. So if that makes it through, that would come here and benefit Morrison County. The other legislation is going to be important and, you know, could potentially benefit us. We would have to get in the running and sort of apply for it with everyone else. I do know right now, so the bill is 50 million. Right now, there's 30, just a little over $32 million in shelter capital projects that are just waiting, similar to ours, where there's a building or there's a space and they have plans for it, but they just don't have the capital funding. So hopefully, if it stays above that 32 mark, you know, that increases our chances of, you know, sort of everyone getting some. But our best bet, you know, would be, our number one hope would be that standalone, that 2617, because that will be just for us here in Morrison County.
Mr. President, so that money that from the bill that Senator Gazzelka and Representative Creashaw have authored, that's not coming from that 50 million?
That's separate.
That's separate.
Yep.
So there could be also money from there that might be?
Yep, I mean, if everything worked, if everything, you know, went through and, you know, we could potentially have that, you know, allocation to us. Last year, we went through this process last year, and we started at 450,000, and by the end, it was down to 50,000. So it kind of shaves down as it goes. But if that were to pass, we would be allocated those funds. And then I would say we would definitely want to apply for the other, you know, competitive dollars as well, just to get what we, as much as we can to be able to, like I said, our capital and operating are both increasing with this program.
Do you know what those costs are?
For the, for us, it's just about 300,000 for the acquisition of the property and then about 300, just under 300,000 for annual operating costs.
You know, this is, it's a big issue in the area right now. Crow Wing County has a central place where the churches are referring everyone there, and the churches are kind of supporting, throwing their support there. Is that something you're probably looking at, maybe with the faith group where?
Yeah.
If we get established. And the benefits to that is they also have, they deal with mental illness problems, because a lot of people who are homeless have that issue. And then try to secure jobs for people and stuff, which is good that Chris is here, because that's kind of the department she works with, you know, Productive Alternatives. And plus, it's a good place to filter out, there are some people.
The transitional housing? Yeah, so yes, we would, I mean, I think this is an issue that there's not just one person or one entity that we can go to and say, "Solve our problem." This is going to take a lot of different pieces, and the faith community is a key component. So we've been having those conversations, and we want to continue, you know, having those conversations about, you know, financial support, support with sort of use of space for resource allocation, volunteers, all of that. So yes, we would, we would be going to the faith community, and I think they're a key component, but not the only piece. There have to be, you know, multiple pieces. And with this program, it'd really be more than sort of the four walls and the roof. It's really about sort of transition for people. You know, that's why we hired the social worker, is that people have that person that will guide them through what resources are you connected to, what resources are available to that we need to connect you to, and how do we get you on a plan so that we're not seeing you again in three months? So that is a key, key component, is whatever we do has to be more than just the structure. You have to have that support services in there for people.
Mr. President, I think it'd be beneficial for the entire council to have some of the knowledge that you have, because that forum that I attended last year, to hear about the cycle of whether it's drinking and drugs and mental illness and no jobs and everything else, you know, how it just beats the other unfortunately.
Absolutely, it can be a cycle when you look at addiction. You know, that can really be a cycle. People leave treatment and don't have a place to go to. If you're ending up back in that same environment, you're, it's not usually a matter of if you will relapse, it's a matter of when that will be. I think I looked, isn't it for Morrison County, 25% of drug, people with drug felonies in the drug court were at one point homeless. And when you're living either without housing, that puts you at risk of relapse as well as in that same environment. Same thing for mental health. If you have a mental health condition, living in a stressful environment of, without housing, is going to just make your symptoms just worse. I would say the big three sort of components I see is mental health, addiction, and then domestic violence is the other piece that is usually often a component. I think it's 80% of women that are homeless have at one point in time experienced domestic violence. So that's a huge sort of contributing factor as well. Not everybody has those, but a lot of times, those three sort of issues come into play for folks.
Mr. President, will you be, will you be working then directly with the drug court system? And are you following another model? Or how are you going about determining the things that you're planning?
Yep, that's a great question. So we do, we do work somewhat with the drug court. We often have folks that are waiting to get into treatment, and that is such a, just a very fragile time for people, where, you know, if we're able to provide them with safety and stability, it's going to increase their chances of actually getting to shelter when there's a bed open and hopefully increase their rate of success with that. As far as our model, we've sort of gone around, that was one of the first things I did when we kind of identified that this was an issue we wanted to tackle, was we went around all throughout Minnesota, mostly rural Minnesota, and looked at what other communities were doing and what was working, what could work here. And we've kind of blended that together for our own sort of what we feel for our organization works and what we feel works in this community. We've also tried to have a lot of conversations around the community with different stakeholders as far as what they're seeing and what they feel would be beneficial for the community. So it's kind of been a blend of what others are doing, what our stakeholders are saying, and what we see would work here.
Council President, I just want to add, I was a part of some of the finding group that started almost four, I think, four years ago. We had some conversations just about bringing up some awareness to, that there is a homelessness issue within Little Falls. I think Oasis has really done a great job exploring what that is, what some of the causes are, and then finding solutions. So the fact that we're here four years later is a testimony to their diligence around this issue. And I've also been a part of conversations that we've had with the law enforcement community, specifically within our own police department, and they're also have added to their perspective of some of the challenges that they face, running into individuals that are in situations like this and certainly have some input to that. And I believe would feel that a resource like this would be a great tool to have for certain folks in our community that, you know, are just right on that edge of housing or not housing. And the work that Oasis or this facility would do in bringing them, connecting them from homelessness into the next, you know, next stage for them is going to be a great opportunity to help in that sector too.
Mr. President, we've been dealing with this for many years and talking about it. It's like you say, four years ago, you were brought into the discussions and mayor has, maybe it's about time we do something. You know, four years, there's been a lot of people who have suffered a lot in that time period. There are people from, and we've known about this for, since I've been on the council, this discussion was brought up almost 12 years ago. It's about time we do actually show our support and do as much as we can in this community to get this thing going.
Thank you for your time and coming and your support and care for people.
Thank you.
Anderson Lake Stormwater, Greg.
Good evening. So a couple of months ago, we were approached, city staff were approached with a concern from some of the residents in the Hidden Oaks area. That's the development basically east of Walmart here. Anderson Lake, it's technically not a lake, but that's what everybody refers to it as. This is essentially a closed basin lake. There's no natural outlet to it. Over the years, its water has continued to rise, and like I mentioned, there's no, there's no natural outlet to this. I did reach out to the DNR to find out what they have for a normal water elevation, to see what that elevation should be in the event that we look forward to getting an outlet. They referred me to the Soylent Water because it's not under the DNR's district, it's underneath the Soylent Water. Soylent Water gave me an elevation in terms of what they would likely set that water elevation at. It's about a foot lower than what it currently is at right now. And so the question comes in, basically, how far do we want to pursue basically an outlet to this, to this lake? When I looked at some information from, and I included in the council packet, from Soylent Water, in terms of rainfall events, the last 11 years out of 20, it's been higher than normal. And so we're continually to get more and more rainfall than what we've used to see. And there was only one rainfall event that was less than that, than that normal. So again, more than half of the time, we're getting more rainfall in there. We can definitely look at what type of a solution would be for it. I think the challenge is going to be working with, again, because over half of this is outside the city limits, so half of it is in, half of it's out. And then how does that connect up to our existing storm sewer system? I don't believe that the current system, as it runs to the west of the Mississippi River, was initially sized to handle an outfall such as this. And so we'd have to look at, you know, how do we, you know, prorate the amount and isolate, okay, this much is for the existing system, this much would be for, for an outlet through that, and then getting that connection. Because there's no, there's no real direct connection to Anderson Lake, to our storm sewer system to get that out. So I guess I'm looking for council direction in terms of how we would like to proceed with that, being that there's a lot of moving parts to this, because it'll, it'll be time and a lot of money in order to get some sort of a solution before we get something that would work.
Mr. President, could we ask the, all the people that aren't in the city that live on the lake?
Yeah.
If they're willing to annex into the city?
Sure, I can send a letter out to them.
Well, it just seems to me that if we're going to be doing them a service, that would be beneficial to us to have, and at least have to pay some tax dollars towards it.
Yeah.
Is that Little Falls Township?
That's Little Falls Township, yes.
Sorry. It's okay.
Go ahead.
Greg, now, what's the source of this lake? And there's no natural outlet to it, is that?
There's no natural outlet to this. Technically, it's a wetland, but everyone calls it Anderson Lake, yeah.
Is it just supplied by runoff from rain and snow and all that? Or is there, is there a feeding source to this, underground?
I don't know if there's springs. There's no, there's no river or stream going into it. So I don't know if it's just underground springs, or if it's just a natural runoff in that area. But there is no natural outlet to it, I do know that.
Mr. President, if I may. Greg, who has jurisdiction over this? I'm going to make the assumption that if it was going to be pumped down, somebody would have to issue a permit.
Morrison County Soylent Water would, yes.
Okay. And I guess to expand on what the mayor said, and I had previously looked at the map before you pulled it up. One property owner owns over half the shoreline for this lake.
True.
And then, so, less than a, I mean, just taking a guess, we've got one, two, three, we got five lots basically on this lake, and they're not even all built on. Why don't we just refer this to the county?
The challenge is, a lot, if you look in Anderson Lake, and I'll zoom in here, these stormwater ponds eventually, they're connected through culverts and storm sewer systems that eventually dump into Anderson Lake. So they kind of go from the south, and they drain to the north up like this, and then eventually get into Anderson Lake. So the elevation of Anderson Lake directly impacts these elevations. Once it's up high enough, which it is right now, it backs up water in through these stormwater ponds, and that's what's causing the problem within the areas that are in the city limits.
And I had someone mention to me over the last couple of years, they've lost a couple trees from the water level coming up.
Yeah.
And they're to the point to probably lose a couple more this year.
Right.
Out of their yard.
Yeah.
I think we can go back in time and question the wisdom of allowing a housing development there. I mean, I drove through, it's a swamp. Built houses on a swamp.
Well, that's in the past, what do we do from this point?
Well, I mean, just.
And they're not in the city limits?
You're right, it's going to be expensive. I mean, you're talking about mechanically reducing the level, which is going to be expensive in engineering with pumping.
I'm, hopefully, can do it with a pipe and not do the pump and the electricity thing, but I haven't ran elevations to know that for a fact.
I mean, if we have to do something, we have to do something. But it'd be my preference that some other entity takes the lead on this, given the...
And they're not in the city limits?
Where would you run that out, if you were going to run that out?
Clover Glen Lane over.
That's a good question. The natural elevation is kind of in this area right here. So the easiest would be to somehow tap into that little pond right here to get it to the west. But we'd have to tie into the storm sewer that serves the Walmart area and the 18th Street. I know there's some down here right across from Aldi's entrance and Walmart's entrance to be able to get into that. So there would be some piping configurations that we would have to do in order to get into that, whether it's along the property line on the north there of Dollar Tree, or whether it's down Woodland Drive. A lot of those are kind of unknown right now.
Greg, could you show with the arrow exactly what part is in the city?
Yep. So all the numbers that are 48 are in the city limits, so I will, it's like right up in here. So that's in the city limits, in the red box, and then everything outside of the red box here is outside of it.
Thank you.
Does that affect the people in Little Falls Township more than the people in the city? I mean, is it pretty high up there?
They're pretty high. They're pretty high on the east end, yeah. Yeah.
It's a tough one.
I'll send them a letter.
Thank you. Live streaming, John.
Thank you, Council President. We are currently being livestreamed of the work, this work session. That is in regards to the press release that I, we issued today regarding our, some of our activities related to the coronavirus and COVID-19. Really, that's probably going to turn more into, this discussion is more, less than out the work session. Frankly, there's a lot of things that are happening, changing on a daily basis. As of last week, Greg and I, Mayor and I were at the Capitol. We heard from the governor on Wednesday, and you would have heard, thought from the things on Wednesday, that you'd had about, you know, a week or two weeks, or maybe a month of just things, kind of business as usual, but being more cautious of potential for the virus, you know, as it, monitoring as it spreads. And by Friday, everything, you know, the school announcement was made, and the emergency measures went into place. And now we're, as of today, we met, we started, or met with a joint group, the county, school, public health, representative from the hospital, EMS, our public safety officers, and most of the supervisors that were available to be here, that could be here, just to make sure that we're coordinating and we have communication channels with one another, so we know what some of the procedures are. We will be diligent in trying to maintain and follow the directions from CDC, Minnesota Department of Health, as well as following the county in some of their lead roles as they coordinate with their dispatch services that we are a part of, you know, because they're, they're taking in those emergency calls. We also wanted to be clear with EMS that as we respond to scenes, that we're doing so and not interrupting or affecting their procedures as they're handling potential cases that are related to COVID. So this is, this is going to be an ever-on-going, ever-changing actions. So just as one of the measures that I felt we could take to try to encourage people to practice in that social distancing and not, and not feel like they had to be in attendance for the council meeting if they, or the work session if they didn't have to be, but could still... still, you know, witness the, the activities that are going on. Because as we operate, you know, we have to be considerate of what point are we going to make some significant changes or impacts to how we operate our public meetings. We do want to be, people to be aware that our meetings are public and we're going to follow those, those practices as well. So, this is, you know, the first step that, that we felt we could take for this. We are working and having conversations as, as supervisors in our departments, what are the measures that we can take to ensure that our departments are safe, that our employees are safe, that there are measures for employees if they are feeling under the weather, that they, if possible, for their jobs and their duties, that they could work from home. So, we're working on making that, making sure that's available for all the employees, that it makes sense that that works for. However, that does not encompass a majority of our employees. Majority of our employees work in the field. They work at the water and wastewater plant, they work for the street department, they work in the parks, and a, a large group of them are patrol officers and captains and the, and sergeant, and the police chief, and the fire chief, that work, you know, very much out in the field. They don't sit behind, at a, at a computer behind a desk most of the time that they're, they're doing their jobs. So, it's, it, working from home is not a luxury that they have, and the community that they serve is going to be an affected population, and then them, and they themselves are going to be, you know, put in, put in harm's way potentially, or, you know. So, we are trying to identify what are the proper safety precautions, what are personal protective equipment that we can issue, make sure that's available for folks, make sure that we are following the guidelines, that the other groups that we are working with are, that we're working in coordination with them and communicating with them along the way, so that everybody has the, the chance to, to be safe and navigate through this, this time, which is going to extend out for, for quite, quite some time. We don't know exactly when, but we've, there's been other parts of the world that have engaged in these measures and are, you know, maybe now starting to see the, the ends of it, the, the decline of it, and we're just getting into the start. As one of the folks said today, in today's meeting, we're just entering the tunnel, and we don't know when, when that, we're going to start seeing the light. So, it's just one of those factors that I wanted to be upfront and try to be as proactive as we can, and, and with the press release today that all of you had seen as well, you know, we're trying to do what we can, and we're going to change and, and assess what we need to do, you know, base, essentially, on a daily basis, and maybe multiple times a day, based on the news that we get relative to the state. We saw today that the library is now closing all their facilities for a period of time, so that certainly impacts a facility that we own but do not operate. As far as other facilities where we host events, the golf course, we are going to take action to not ho, to, to cancel or postpone events that do, at this time, we set 50 people. That was the recommendation of the CDC as of this morning, when we were crafting the, the message, and now we're hearing, you know, that, that number should be, could be down to as low as 10. So, as we assess things, we're going to make sure that, that we're working on, on dealing with that. Unfortunately, some of our facilities are not, not yet open for the season, and others are run by, by partners, so they're going to have to work and make sure that they're making their decisions that are in the best interest of their staff and employees and volunteers. You know, in the case of the, the zoo in Linden Hill, you know, that, that we own the property but are operated by other partners, that they're going to have to make and, take into those considerations. So, I, I would expect that, because we are in a month that has five Mondays, we have three weeks between now and our next meeting, you know, with all the news and rapidly changing, just wanted you to be conscious and aware that, you know, they're not certain as to what, but that we may need to call for a special meeting of the council, just to be able to take actions and, and provide, you know, provide measures and ensure that our, our employees and that the public are, can handle this situation in the best way possible and with the least amount of burden that's, that's impacted by them. Fortunately, there was some, the school is making some decisions around childcare, and has offered up for all of our public safety staff, firefighters, police officers, that if they do have childcare needs, that they, they would be able to provide that as a, as a service for them. So, that was announced today, directed our police department and fire to make sure that those, that they were, those, their employees that have those needs, that they're aware of that, that that would be available for them.
Mr. President, going back to the original topic, livestreaming, I think it's vital at this point, we do something like this, because if the recommendation is by the president and the governor, only have 10 people in, in a meeting, a group, that would kind of shut down the public to any access to what's going on in the special meetings, and to put it on lives, livestreaming makes sense. At least they have the opportunity to watch. So, I would think this would be a good move on our part.
Yep, and I believe we started right after the public comment period.
Mr. President, so, looking forward after this crisis that we so have going, looking us in the eyeballs right now, after that's over, are we going to continue livestreaming? Or is this just a temporary until?
That was a question that I was going to bring to the council. At this time, I made that decision, you know, for, for this meeting and, and ongoing despite the crisis. So, I, you know, as we navigate through this, through this timeframe, we can discuss that. There, there certainly are, have been requests and for livestreaming the work session in the past, and the council has, has made a few of the decisions, or made decision on that a couple of times before, but I think in, in respect to what we're going through now and the requests that we have seen, that's certainly worth making a decision and seeing how it's going to operate and how it, it functions. I've been, I've had it up and running, and we've had, it, it does, YouTube does give me a list of concurrent viewers, and currently, we're at four for, for this session right now, so.
Mr. President, if I could, my understanding that, since it was voted down, doesn't it have to be brought back, or can we bring it back every year for the rest of our lives? Otherwise, it's been voted down in the past, and not that we can't do it in the emergency, I agree with everybody who's talking around here 100%. But once it's voted down, I thought it had to be brought back by somebody who had voted against it.
I would say right now, we, and you've all received the request, we do have a request from, from an individual for, based on an accommodation, we have, I have asked for advisement on that from various sources, and at this, this time, the recommendation would be to just, you know, have the livestream operating. For more information on just the operations of this, you know, we do have our, a regular meeting, we have it as part of our contract that, that, that is operated by our partner for the public, public access channel. They handle the production of, of that, so switching, you know, we have cameras switch around, you know, depending on what, what is going on in the meeting, who is speaking. Unfortunately, with that, that's, we've only contracted for that portion of the meeting, so at this time, all they're seeing right now is a static shot from the, from the camera straight in front of you, from the council, or corner, I guess a corner shot, but that encompasses a variety of the room. So, it's, it, unfortunately, that's all we have to, to offer through this without modifying that contract and likely paying additional for that, for that service. So, it is just, it's as bare bones as it's going to be. We turn the cameras on and we, you know, make the connection to the livestream.
Well, and another question would be, depending on, to what level this goes, there's the possibility that we'd have to go to Skype or WebEx or...
That it, yeah, we have, as, yeah, that has been brought up in, in considerations, you know, if, if any of you were at all infected and, you know, and certainly would want to avoid that, you know, you get to a point where mass, mass amount of you were there and you wouldn't be able to form a quorum in person, you know, we'd be in a real dire situation if we can't, you, it's, you know, just hypothetically saying, not accusing anybody of being infected with the virus, but if, you know, five of you had it at the same time, and you're quarantined in your, in your homes, can't really make your, your home that you're, is quarantined now available to the public, which would be the opportunity to, you know, the only way that, in which that you could operate and, and be remotely into the meeting. So, I anticipate that the, the state is taking into factor some of those continued contingencies. I'm not certain if they're going to make that available to us, but I know I've seen discussion that those are, those have been, have been brought up. So, I don't know if the, the governor or anybody at the state has, has instigated that yet. That has not been formally announced through, like, the league or, or any of our, our partners that follow this situation really closely.
I imagine they'll have that brought up to them, though, we'll have to see what they say.
Mr. President, I believe, though, getting back to what the mayor had asked, is, I believe, a motion to reconsider could be made, and with two-thirds majority of the council accepting that, that we could bring that back up as a council to revote, revote on it.
We may have to check that, because I, you know, I haven't read it in the last week, but my understanding on this council was that's, the rules were what I stated, that we had to be brought back from a no vote. So, I don't know.
Someone that had voted, you know, previously, that has been our, part of our charter, we'd, we'd have to review the, you know, directly the policies. But at this point, this is, based on emergency needs, you know, we're trying, I'm, you know, do not need to, in, in the current light of times, trying not to make, you know, a lot of emergency decisions that are in opposition of what the council has said before, but we felt it was important to try to do that, to manage attendance at our meetings in, in light of recommendations that the CDC is making.
I think in light of the current circumstances, that was a good way to do it. We'll just have to evaluate.
Yeah, I've had colleagues even approach me, asking, myself personally and through listservs, you know, what are, what are some of the procedures that they advise, and, and I, I think, just based on the timing, knowing that this meeting was coming, try not to stall business and impacting the financial in, in decisions that happen, because if you all don't meet tonight and vote on the bills, and the bills are delayed for a certain period of time, and those checks don't get sent, and, you know, certainly, that impacts a lot of, a lot of folks, as we do, you know, especially with the wastewater projects and, and things that are going on right now. We have a lot of, a lot of business that is just happening on a transactional basis with the city.
Oh, and I don't want people to get the wrong message from me. I support what we're doing right now 100%. It makes total sense. Let's get through this and worry about tomorrow, tomorrow.
Automated meter reading system, Lori?
Yes, back in 2014, the city upgraded our automated meter reading system using data collectors that are located on the two water towers, and then on each, while, for each, where each water meter is located, we have what's called a MIU, which is a, a meter interface unit. That MIU then will, it's wired to the water meters, and it, it's a two-way signal where it, it sends the meter reading to the water tower, to the collector, and then the collector responds back to the MIU and says, yep, we got the reading, kind of a thing. So, we did that back in 2014. Since we installed that software, we have done no upgrades or anything to the software, and we all know technology changes, not quite as fast as the coronavirus, but just about. But, you know, technology changes, things, things change. Now that we have someone in the meter reading area again, and, and we're working full-time trying to get things caught up, we, we're finding that we're having some issues with our MIUs, and we need to do some software upgrades. In addition to that, the Microsoft is phasing out the Adobe Flash, which is something that runs in the background of the system and operates and communicates with the Neptune software. And so, in, in visiting with Ferguson Waterworks and, and talking about some of our problems and things that are going on, we also wanted to migrate to have Ferguson host that software, similar to what we do with Incode, where it's hosted with the company. That way, we don't need to have servers and, you know, spend a lot of money on hardware and that kind of stuff. So, going through all these discussions, it was decided or, or recommended that we, we migrate from the Neptune R450 system, which is what we currently have, and move up to the Neptune R900 system. So, that's a newer software, they aren't supporting, we can still use the 450, but they, you know, aren't making any changes to it anymore, they aren't, you know, going to be keeping that up, they're, they're migrating their clients to the R900 system. So, working with Ferguson, they have indicated that they will install, they will supply and install two collectors that work with the R900 system at no cost to the city. And our expense then would be the hosted software, well, they, it's the software upgrade and then to host it. So, the cost to us in the first year is $9,450, second year is $11,445, and year three is $13,475. In addition, we would have to purchase what they call a belt clip, which is what they use to verify that we have good installs on our MIUs or as, when we install them, wire them, you have to make sure that the install is good before you leave the property. So, you know, those are the two expenses to us. Our current meters, our current MIUs will still work on the 450 system, but as we run into meter issues or MIU issues, we will replace them with the, the newer, the, the R900 system. So, eventually, we'll phase out of the 450 and have everything running on the 900 system.
Any questions?
Yes, we're going to be working on that water tower on the west side, is that going to interfere in any way with the system?
Potentially, we're, I mean, the tower will get moved off, the collector will get moved off of the tower. We're pretty fortunate in that a lot, I would say over half of our meters will respond to both towers, just because we're pretty, our size-wise, we're not huge, other than going north out in the Belle Prairie area, but a lot of our meters will respond to both towers. So, if one is down, they will kind of reroute themselves and, and go to the other tower. But you still, the two towers for redundancy purposes and to get all of the meters, you know, is something we will need. But yeah, we will, we're aware of that, and we're working, we'll have to try and figure out how we're going to do that.
Any other items? Constituent complaints?
Mr. President, I had a complaint from a resident who lives right across from the sheriff's department on the corner of Third Street. They have a driveway that comes out parallel with Third Street, so they're right in that action area. They say that when they're backing out of the driveway, they can't see on either side because there's cars parked right up to their, right up to their driveway. Know what I mean?
On Third Street?
Yeah, they're on the corner of Third Street.
Just south of the courthouse?
Right across from the sheriff's department. And so, that road comes out right there, out of, out of the parking lot, and so, it's a pretty busy road there, and we're doing something farther down with parking. But their concern is that they can't see either way when they're backing out, so it's kind of like make a wish and start backing up, so I don't know if there's anything we can do about that. Thank you.
There are four houses that back out right there.
Convention and Visitors Bureau, they're kind of in a dilemma right now because of some of this virus issues and that. Funding has been cut off in a few areas, and I was speaking to Chris earlier today, Chris Vonberg, they're going to need some help if they're going to stay afloat. And the discussion we had is if there's a way we could forego maybe some of their rent or something, just to get them through the year, because it's going to be, this is hitting everybody, but I, we, I feel it would be important we don't lose the Convention and Visitor Bureau, and if there's anything as a council we can do to help, would certainly be of benefit. So, Chris, probably would have been better if she would have spoke to everybody at the beginning. I don't know if you want to allow her three minutes now, or, I suppose you can't really do that, but I thought I'd just bring it up.
Well, and obviously, we all have concerns for every small business in our community also, so, you know, it all ties together. I agree.
Council President, with the governor closing all restaurants and bars, there will be no restaurant taxes collected, and that's the biggest way that the CBB is funded. So, I agree with Frank, something we might want to think about is a way that we can I agree with Frank, something we might want to think about is a way that we can help out the CBB so they can stay afloat.
Probably something for us to talk about in another, next work session or something.
Council President, I think one of the areas that we could really look at is their, through their maintenance costs with the mowing and, and stuff like that, we got Maple Island, that's just, you know, 50 feet or a couple hundred feet away from there, they, if they're mowing down there, why couldn't they just go up and mow? I think, I think that would save them about, if they, if they did the mowing, and if there was something with the insurance costs, that could save them probably somewheres around $9,000, so.
Anyone else? We will adjourn until our 7:30 meeting.